Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee shall identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for not longer than three minutes. All remarks will be addressed through the chair of the meeting. Public comment is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between citizens and the committee, so committee members are not going to respond. We're just here to listen. Public comment is a citizen's opportunity to express their opinion on issues of school committee business. Written comments, longer than three minutes, may be presented to the committee before or after our meetings for the committee's review and consideration at that time. Remarks can be submitted to schoolcommittee@winchesterps.org. Ms. Bergstrom will keep time for us.
Mr. Bergstrom.
Yes?
There are people in the back who are having a hard time hearing you.
Oh, sorry? Do you want me to repeat that?
No. No question.
I will try to project louder for you.
I don't, I think these are mostly for our online audience, but bottom line is, public comment is for 20 minutes, three minutes per person. If you have something longer or we run out of time, you can submit it to us. We'll read all the comments that are submitted. And so, at this point, Ms. Bergstrom, if you want to call up our first person for public comment?
I'm going to try to decipher handwriting and I'll read last names. Montgomery?
Right here.
Mr. Montgomery. So there's a table right over here with a microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. John Montgomery, 15 Grassmere Avenue. I'm here to talk about the early, early literacy program at our schools. And I'm here because I want you to know that there is another generation that is intensely interested in this subject. I am the father of two children who attended the Winchester Public Schools, and two of my grandchildren will start shortly. And judging by my email traffic and my texts, there are many of us who are as interested and as committed to the quality of the education program as we were 30 or more years ago. I want to applaud the superintendent for the letter that he sent last week, setting out a commitment and a timeline to evaluate the program here in Winchester. I am hoping that his evaluation will address questions that I, I'm not an expert, I'm just a parent and a grandparent, but questions that I have. First, I know that this issue regarding the literacy program arose at least three years ago, shortly before Superintendent Hackett arrived in Winchester, that the school committee spent a lot of time addressing it in January of 2021. And I am wondering why we are still here, because I can't tell from anything that I have been able to discern what decisions, if any, were made in the ensuing three years. I am interested in learning what our curriculum actually is in Winchester and whether it's coherent, coordinated, and consistent. Because as far as I can tell, it is not. You have a discredited units of study curriculum. You have other curriculum or curricula used by a number of teachers, like the Florida program, which is incompatible with units of study. So that tells me we do not have a consistent program. Is that important? And if so, why not? The next question I have is, what is our assessment protocol in Winchester? And is that consistent with our curriculum, whatever it is? And then the last question I have is, I would hope that the superintendent would take a look at the decision-making process and communications in our town. Because as I, in just the last couple of weeks, compare Winchester with other towns, it appears to be very poor. I can tell from other towns what their curriculum is.
I'm sorry, Mr. Montgomery, that's your three minutes, so if you just want to finish up.
Well, I think I've, I think I've made the point. Our communication is poor. You can't tell what the curriculum is. You can't tell who's making decisions. A parent can't tell, heading into a particular school, what the curriculum in that school is, or what the curriculum is in a particular classroom. And I would hope that that is unacceptable and that you'll evaluate how we came to be in such a state, in such a critical part of our education program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, McDougal, Jillian McDougal? Did I get that right?
What did you say?
Jillian McDougal?
Yeah, McDonough.
McDonough, okay.
Hi, I'm Jillian McDonough. This is the second time I've had to speak post a really eloquent speaker, so, sorry. But I wanted to thank you for the email that did go out and address the concerns. I think it's a great, a really great first step, and I appreciate it. I think everybody appreciates it. The one thing that I'm hoping to call attention to before we come to that meeting in February is that I think I would really push for an outside consultant to be part of that evaluation process, along with the superintendent and all the other key players that are there. But I do think that it would go a long way to show that that email wasn't just lip service, that we are really trying to find actionable items that can change the way that we're doing things. If, for instance, there's over 400 people in this face group, group that we have been talking with, there's many, many that are on email, there's many people that are here tonight, but there's very few that are willing to kind of speak up and say what they need to say. And that, I can only imagine, is especially true when it's their job on the line and they're speaking to their bosses. And so, I, I think that it would go a long way, that if we called in a third-party consultant to be able to help form a plan on next steps, it might be something we could push for a little bit more before February. That's it.
Thank you.
The next name on the list is Laura Malone.
My name is Laura Malone. I am at 27 Mount Pleasant Street. I actually, I grew up in Winchester, and actually, my father spoke earlier. And I recently moved back. And I was, you know, upset to learn that we are using a reading curriculum that is failing one in three students. And I think that that, just that a baseline is horrible, and I think everyone, of course, would agree with that. And I think, you know, it's very easy in hindsight, right, to criticize, oh, we shouldn't have done this, we shouldn't have done that. And I do believe that, of course, you know, the school committee and the superintendent, whoever adopted the programs that we've been using, thought that they were doing the right thing. And I'm sure that, that's why we have continued to do that. However, you know, from what I've read, there is a lot of, there's tons of data now showing that the, the methods that we're using are not working for everyone. And I don't think, you know, that we should always be relying on having parents be forced to get tutors to help support their children, when a public education is something that's guaranteed to everyone. And to support all students, to, to learn what they need to learn. And I have two young children who are going to be starting these schools soon, and they deserve to be supported like everyone else. And I think, you know, I attended the school committee meeting last week, and I was, you know, it was very interesting to hear all of the budget. That probably took a lot of work, so thank you, Mr. Hackett, Dr. Hackett. But my concern, after attending that meeting, and again, I would echo whatever my father and also his McDougal, I think it was, said, which is, you know, thank you very much for your letter. It sounds like you're taking some steps to listen to what people are saying, which is a great thing. But how is the fiscal year '25 budget going to, or is it going to have room for any sort of improvements that come from whatever analysis is going to be done to figure out what we need to change? Because I don't think that it's fair to any student to have to wait any longer than necessary to make the necessary changes so that everyone can learn what they need to learn, the way they need to learn it, based on science. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Nora Cooney? Welcome, Ms. Cooney.
Hi. Sorry, I'm sure you're getting sick of hearing from me, and I will be brief. But Nora Cooney, 10 O'Nite Road, Winchester. I just want to start again by saying thank you like others did. It really did mean a lot for the superintendent, Dr. Hackett, for you to address this and start this important conversation with our community, and I think we're all very appreciative. And I just wanted to make sure, since I've been speaking up, that I also wanted to come and just thank you so much for starting this effort and taking the time to listen and making sure that parents and teachers will have the opportunity to give honest feedback, and, as Jill was saying, in a safe place. I know that's important to all of you guys as well, so that people really feel like they can communicate what they need, which is what we all want to do, to support our wonderful teachers and find out what they need to, you know, do what they think needs to do to help our children, and what we all, I think, agree at this point probably needs to happen to really help our children. It was also very helpful to hear you lay out the budget and really understand, you know, our more limited per pupil compared to maybe some other areas in the state, and also the potential downside to our primarily residential tax base. But I just wanted to urge, as we're going through this, to not let potential funding issues dictate recommendations. Let's figure out first what we need, and then we can figure out how to pay for it and how to prioritize that. So I just wanted to urge that, and as we were looking at all these issues. And to that end, while I really hope that the process that we lay out collaboratively, come to together, leads to district-wide change and an extensive support for our teachers, I'm sure that funding's going to be a bit of an issue. And I'm worried it's going to take time. And when it comes to our kids, however, we really can't wait, as you all, I'm sure, agree. And so that, to that end, I'd really urge the district and the school committee to consider what we can do while we're figuring out this plan to help support our kids who are currently in K-2. And to just restore some trust and confidence in the district as all this is being discussed. So ideally, there could be some sort of after-school, not as a replacement, but as a stopgap, like district-run after-school program that people could pay for, not necessarily paid, you know, run by, or paid for by the district, but ideally that people could choose to pay for, and sort of like how Wright Lock Farm will say, like, are you willing to pay 15% more to help a kid who might not have these resources, or 25% more? I know there's a lot of families that would, who are paying for tutors and have trouble finding tutors. And if you could have an after-school program where it's small groups and they're able to pay less and pay more to help with the equity issue, so that plenty of kids who maybe can't afford a tutor, or parents who can't find it or can't make the time, because their kids are in after-school care, or whatever the reason, would have that same opportunity. Or something like Word Detectives, like Northeastern does over the summer. I think there'd be a lot of interest in something like that. So consider other opportunities to help our kids in the meantime, as we figure this out, I think would be, would go a really long way to just the confidence that we have in how the district's approaching this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the last, our last public comment is Leah Klein.
So I thought I would start by sharing, and really just level-setting, that 95% of students have the capacity to read. And when we know that 95% of students have the capacity to read this town, and the teachers that we have in this town have the ability to make that kind of, close that kind of opportunity gap, when we're not addressing that, we're not, we're, we're looking, we're bystanders on inequity. And we're seeing inequity by the fact that there are parents that do have to hire tutors, have to close the gap themselves, when the instruction is not scientifically-based. Science of reading is not a political movement. It is not an ideology. It is not a curriculum. It is a vast body of knowledge and research that has happened over decades. And change started happening as the result of Mississippi. And Mississippi was the first state to be able to make changes to their NAEP scores. And they did that because they trained their teachers in structured literacy. Structured literacy is the application of the science of reading. There are programs that are out there that are claiming to be the science of reading because, as we all know, this is an opportunity. But there are, we know that the program that we have in place right now has been debunked. CHIEF, the Corps, has called that out in a 50-page document with citations. It is not only debunked, but it is a disservice to our children. This has led to states across the country, 37 approximately to date, have passed legislation to remove this kind of teaching from our classroom, to protect students that have dyslexia. But this is not a special education problem. This is the right of our students. They have made a movie on it, called The Right to Read. That movie is about equity. That is about kids. Prison beds are dictated by literacy levels in the third grade. This is a longitudinal study that is one of the most powerful that have ever been done. So we know, and we all feel passionate about literacy. We cannot wait around any longer. There's no more time. It's not another year. And I appreciate that there's a timeline. I appreciate that there is a response. But my ask is that there's an understanding of urgency, because we are truly doing our children a disservice when we do nothing. And I think we all know enough to know that what is currently being done is not effective. It is not based in science, and it does not have efficacy behind it. There are many programs, while they may not be the most science, you know, there's a range of programs. There's a range of curriculums. I'm asking that we begin the process of removing the curriculum that we know is ineffective and begin to make choices for a true reading program and reading approaches that are effective. I want to say one more thing. This is not a straightforward, easy process. I work with districts across the New England area, and it has messiness to it. Professional learning is really critical when it comes to awakening our teachers and feeling and experiencing this change. There are aha moments that do happen. I've heard that anecdotally. I've been, I've seen it aggregate from a research perspective. So please understand that this is not easy, and we recognize that. It's not easy to make this change, and there will be people that don't necessarily, are not ready for it, and not necessarily agree with it. But we need to do it, and there's enough evidence out there to, to make this happen by next year. So, thank you.
And I want to say on behalf of the committee, thank you to everyone who provided comments, either tonight, or in prior nights, or via email. We really do appreciate and hear everything you're saying. And if you didn't have an opportunity to submit something, feel free to send email. With that, I'd like to close public comment and move on to reports, updates, and action items on the agenda. Dr. Hackett, your superintendent remarks are next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, everybody. We have, tonight, as you know, we have a, you have a, another budget vote on the superintendent recommended budget. The actual bottom line that you see in front of you tonight is actually the same as the bottom line you saw at last meeting. As per your request, I have added, and will talk about at the end of the budget presentation, a couple of recommendations, if we were to, if you were to want to roll them into the budget, or if additional funding became available. And I'll kind of walk through those. Obviously, you, this is also your, your opportunity to, as you've processed public, the public hearing last, last week, and some of your own thoughts, you know.
You can't, I'm sorry. No, you can't close the door.
The, the discussion is yours tonight, too. So, I'll give a minute.
Yeah. Really sorry for those remaining in the room, but for it to be a public meeting, our door has to stay open. It has to stay open.
We have to leave it open, thank you.
Thanks.
So really, that's, that's the purpose of tonight's meeting. As you know, you do need to actually vote a bottom-line number, and that, then we will turn that over to the town manager later on this week for the budget, then go through the process that it'll go through over the next several months. So I also wanted to just comment on the fact that I did send out, if you hadn't heard, a communication on literacy last week. I have received feedback on it, and I appreciate the feedback that came tonight. And the intent, just to make sure that we're clear of the 13th and of this process, or let me start with the process, and I tried to spell it out as clearly as I could, is that we are looking to get feedback from those who obviously are willing and able and to come to these meetings, to provide emails to us. We've received all of that. But we also want to make sure that we are actively seeking out feedback from people who may not be comfortable emailing, who may not be comfortable speaking publicly, who may not be comfortable for whatever reason. Because this has been, as you know, an emotional issue, and there are high emotions around it. So it's important for us to make sure that we are hearing all voices, and that really is, for me, the most important part of the process, that step. Because I think it does two things. One, it gives us data that maybe, that hopefully, it would be my, my goal and my dream, would be able to take those data and be able to put them into some kind of numbers, so that we can start to remove some of the emotion from the conversation. This is not a lit review. This is not a research review of best practices. This is really an opportunity for people to talk about what they do as classroom teachers in their classroom, how they use the different programs that we, that we have available to us within the town of Winchester and the schools. Talk about what their struggles are, talk about what their strengths are, talk about different things that we would want them to be able to tell us, so that we have more information, we're fully informed about how our own people are using this, and then how parents are experiencing literacy with us and with their kids. So I just, at the February meeting, the 13th, the intent is for me to provide the committee with an update. We would likely also provide the committee with an overview of what we do. There's been a lot of things that have been said that are, we would like to go at some point on the record to, to say what we do. There's, certainly, there's been, there's misunderstandings and misconceptions, which, you know, we, you know, I will own in terms of us being able to clearly articulate what it is that we do. And I want to make sure that we at least have the grounded understanding across, and it's not the first time that this presentation has been given to a certain extent. We have done this before, but we're committed to doing it in light of this discussion, as well as also making that information more available, more readily available to, to the public and to parents as we move forward, either through our website or some updates as we go. So I just want to set expectations and manage expectations, because I heard some stuff tonight that, it concerns me that this is not a ramp up to a vote on the 13th. The 13th is me updating you as a committee on the steps, next steps in the process. I am certainly well aware that there, that there is a sense of urgency for some around this issue. I understand that completely, but I also want to make sure that we are doing this right. Because whatever we do and wherever we go with this, we want to make sure that we have the information that we, that we need to have, that we've listened to everybody. And as it was said near the end, I mean, the, the highest part of all of this, if there's going to be change in, in, at public education, is the change process takes time. So I have no predetermined outcome for this process, and I want to also say that. I am open to hearing. I hope others are as well, because that is critical for us to do this successfully. We can't build trust if we can't have a conversation if we're all not willing to listen. So we're willing to listen. We're going to listen. We're going to take that on, and then we're going to go from there. So the first step of the process, or this, when this process concludes, and it will be done through a third party, we're looking for someone to come in and help us do this, who can be seen as objective. We're looking specifically for research design, people that can set this process up, who know what they're doing and how to ask questions, so it's not, as I said before, me putting out a survey monkey that really isn't well-designed. And that's the first step. After that, I'm hopeful, and I believe that those results will, will enable us to continue the discussion and have a sense for where to go next. So that's what I'm committed to, and I hope, again, that everyone else is too, because it's not going to work if we don't keep an open mind about, one, what we're even doing, and it's our job to make sure you're informed about that, and I understand that, and that's the work that we have in front of us. And two, that we're willing to hear all perspectives on this, because I think there is more than one perspective for, across the board. So that's, that's what I hope that will come out of this, and I did try to articulate that in the, in the message, but, you know, that's the, the power of written messages, that people get a chance to read it, but sometimes what they take away from it is not always what you intended. So with that, I, I don't have any further comments for tonight.
Okay. And I want to just, you know, acknowledge, obviously, the very high interest in, in literacy in the community that we've been hearing loud and clear. And, and as Dr. Hackett says, we'll hear from the district, you know, on, on the 13th, at which point we can discuss a, you know, a thoughtful approach to, you know, really engaging with, with our teachers and members of the community around the topic. The 13th is one of our regularly scheduled meetings, and there will be an opportunity for public comment there as well. We'll also be considering other items on the agenda, including the 24, 25 school calendar and other items. So that's my sort of update, adding to your, I thought you did a good job.
I appreciate that. I do want to loop back on the point, though. So the 13th, the presentation of the committee into the community is about what we're doing, about what we have available to us. It's not a defense of what we're doing. It's not us trying to lay down a gauntlet of what we're doing. It's us informing everybody of what we are doing, because I do believe there's a lot, there are, there's some misinformation, and again, we own that, but it's, it's important for us to, to reset that piece of it. So that's what we're going to be doing. We're going to be explaining to the committee and to the public, the programs that we use, what they mean, what we do, and how, what our approach to literacy is, and what we have done over the last several years, because it hasn't been the case that we have heard this for three years and haven't done anything. That is, so we want to make sure that we all just understand and have a common language around what it is that, that we're doing. So, thank you.
Great. Do our students have anything you want to, school reports?
I think over at the high school, we're pretty much, the first semester's ended, so everyone's just kind of getting into the second semester, but I think we have more stuff coming up in March, so we will talk to you more about that in the future.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda, yeah?
I just, I just wanted to thank Michaela. You spoke about how you had addressed the Senate on financial literacy. And I did hear back from our delegation.
Oh, you did?
That mentioned that they noticed that you were there, and they heard from you. So sometimes it's always good to get that feedback, to know that when you do take the opportunity to speak out, that people have heard you. So I just wanted to let you know that, and kudos to you.
Oh, thank you. That's so exciting. I was glad to go. It was a very interesting experience. Very good.
And I'd just comment, some kudos to the school council and Aiden Wong and all of the committee who were working on the Second Annual Multicultural Night last week. I was able to go for a few minutes, and it was just really exciting to see the gathering there and all the different groups and posters and the food. So that was very nice.
They did a wonderful job.
Yeah, they really did. So that was exciting. And then also, congratulations to the students who, in the music program, who were accepted to the state.
Excellent.
Band, and music, band and orchestra, so, and chorus. So that was exciting, too.
Excellent. Well, thank you. So our next item is our consent agenda, and we have consideration of acceptance of a $750 grant from the Network for Social Justice for reading materials for the students with limited or interrupted formal education, and consideration of acceptance of a $1,000 grant from the NCIS Society for the WHS Spring Musical.
Motion to approve is presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved, and we're on to our budget deliberation. Dr. Hackett?
Okay. Well, you get to hear me go through this again, so my apologies on the front end. I'm sick of hearing myself talk, so, but here we are. Again, most all of this is going to look very familiar to you. To start, just to reiterate, this is a, this is a-level services budget. There are no new positions or programs currently in this budget as it stands. We are implementing the third year of contracts for all of our bargaining units. This particular year, the last year of this contract carries a 4% increase for, for teachers in full imitation of a Masters plus 90 column. Other additional adjustments to other units were also carried within this. Other additional adjustments to other units were also carried within this budget. You know, we felt this was a critical step for us. We appreciate the WA's willingness to work with us and bargain with us, and I think we came up with a, was a fair contract. What I do know about this contract is it definitely has made us more competitive in the market. We just anecdotally know that we're losing fewer people, that may or may not be related, but it's hard to imagine that there's not some connection to that. And we're also seeing pools that are a little bit more full. Again, this may or may not be related to this, but I do know the first three years, or my first year anyway, that we were absolutely losing people to other surrounding communities, and they weren't just going for $2,000. In some cases, they were going for $10,000, $12,000. So I hope, and I believe this has kind of stemmed the tide on this, and this is to us, you know, obviously, the, our personnel, our teachers, our support staff are, is what we do. I mean, it's the biggest part of our budget every year, as you know. It's what, where the investment belongs, and it's where we put the investment. So this year just presented a little bit more of a challenge in terms of when we roll over, because the majority of our budget is personnel, we roll over higher this year than we have in previous years, which just, you know, creates some additional challenges and some constraints that we have to manage through. Next slide, kind of going off mine, too. Okay. So the budget itself does not include the cost of Lynch transportation for next year, but we will show you how we're proposing to cover that cost at the end of this presentation. So while it's not in the operating budget, we do have a plan for covering it should no additional funding become available. Again, this is one more year, we hope, everything is on time, on time and on budget, is what we like to say with the Lynch Project. And for, as far as we are concerned, we are really looking at one more year in providing this service to our Lynch families. Again, it's a kind of a little bit of a double hit, because we're providing free transportation, it's been highly used, we're running anywhere from 10 to 11 buses, it has had an impact on other tiers, and we're also not collecting fees. So the kind of net of swing on this for us is about $321,000. For our out-of-district tuition, we are working hard to close the gap, the structural gap that we have talked about now since I've been here. Our ESAR funds are fully expended for FY24. We have committed those in this budget to, the $334,000 are committed to out-of-district tuition costs that are a direct result of the pandemic. But I will share some news, and I think we're seeing some trends in the right direction with that. As you remember also, this year, the state allowed out-of-district schools to go up by 14% on their tuition, which I can pretty sure that we could not bring a budget to town meeting floor at a 14% increase and get support, but that's what it is. So those costs are passed on to us. That was a significant lift for us going into this year, and it obviously resets, so for every year from now on, we're 14% higher. Next year, it's a little bit over 4% is what the limit is for out-of-district schools in terms of increase in tuition amount. We have one-time IDEA funds that will be expended in this current year, so between the 334 and the 236, that is revenue that we are using in the current fiscal year to cover those costs that will not be available to us next year. So that presents a little bit of a challenge as well. We have had a significant reduction in retirements, which is a good thing, but also, if you recall, last year coming into this year, partly because of the early retirement incentive that was negotiated, I believe, we had quite a few retirements, which was helpful for us in terms of being able to hire new people who were generally were at a lower rate on the salary schedule than the people who were retiring, and that breakage, as we call it, helps also to offset increases in other areas that's not really available for us this year. And then currently, we're carrying one reduction in elementary sections. Our enrollment continues to kind of flatten, still a little bit of a decline at the elementary level, but we'll see. We're, you know, we did have a new enrollment projection done, they did make an adjustment for COVID, so we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. But currently, we've taken one section. As you know, I could come back to you and say, we need three sections, you know, sometime in July. This is always, just like everything else in our budget, it can change, it can change rapidly depending on what's happening in the community. The, I shared this slide, it was mentioned tonight, not because it's, I mean, it's more of a statement of fact than anything else. Winchester is in the, really in the bottom 30% of all school systems in the state and the Commonwealth, close to 400 school systems. We're in the bottom 30% of our per pupil expenditure. That, and as I explained at the public hearing the other night, there's a lot of reasons why Winchester is challenged. I have said out loud to people, I've been in places with a lot less money, that's been a lot easier to budget, because there have been other sources of revenue. We do not get any other sources of revenue. We are primarily residential tax-based. There really isn't, you know, a large business tax base here, as you all know, and I know that really kind of almost, not quite dollar-for-dollar, but any increases in the town or the school department budget are felt directly by the taxpayers on the tax base. And as you know, there's a 2.5% cap year-over-year that cannot be exceeded, and I think everyone understands that the inflation rate has been higher than 2.5% year-over-year. Everything from health insurance, which the town covers, to benefits, to just hiring, to contracts, to across the board. I mean, there isn't anyone in here that hasn't felt the effect of inflation in the last several years. So to, you know, it's been a challenge over the last two or three years to bring our budgets in and stay within that cap, when in fact, we're being outpaced in many cases by inflation at a rate that we cannot really keep pace with. It's a long-term problem that is really coming to roost, I think, on us soon. The town manager and select board have been talking about, just over the last couple of years, about the kind of the fiscal cliff that we are potentially facing in terms of the cost, year-over-year operational costs, and projecting what those look like in terms of how they're, what their trajectory is compared to what the revenue and anticipated revenue sources will be bringing in over the next several years. So that is an ongoing conversation that I think that we'll be hearing more about, and I think we will be speaking to a little bit more in this fiscal, in this fiscal year and planning for FY25. So the result of that, it means that every dollar that we have is, we don't have a lot of extra dollars, whether it be through the operating budget, whether it be through grants, we don't receive much in Title I, for example. We don't receive much of an increase in Chapter 70 year-over-year. Every year, we get these, the per pupil minimum allocation increase, which is very insignificant for us. When we hear things like the Student Opportunity Act and the fact that we have to spend a lot of time planning and submitting documents for that to the state, I just want to make sure everyone understands that the Student Opportunity Act is funded through Chapter 70, and when you're getting the minimum per pupil allocation, that means you're not really getting any additional funding for the Student Opportunity Act. So it's an opportunity for us to be creative about how we can say that we're getting and what we're doing with these zero extra dollars that we're receiving, and we do that, I think, extraordinarily well. But the reality is, it is completely a misnomer for us in Winchester. We do not receive any additional funding in that regard. We really are, you know, going into next year with a rollover. You can see that the Spring '23 budget, or the FY24 budget, I'm sorry, the year that we're in, ended up with a 3.76% increase. We went through the process this year. We brought a, forward a rollover budget, which was really just taking what we're doing, moving everything forward, adjusting for contracts. It wasn't looking at any kind of potential reductions of retirements or reduction of sections. It was just a starting point for us to understand what it would cost if everything stayed the same, but we just put it into FY25. The advantage that it had this year is we know what the contracts were, so we were able to actually get a number to put on that, and we weren't waiting for negotiations to conclude. And then we came back on the 16th with another draft of that budget, which we were able to bring to 4.87%, mainly through just looking at, you know, those things that I just said that we did not do through the rollover budget. And then I brought forward to the committee for the public hearing, a 4.74% increase budget, which is where we sit today. Breaking down the actual 4.74%, the majority of that increase, $2.5 million is contractual obligations. $377,000 of it is out-of-district tuition, and then we did have, we are in the, going into the first year of a new transportation contract that carries about a $57,000 increased cost to it. Just for everyone's, and everyone can do the math, but just as we keep this in mind, every 1% up or down is about $660,000. So as we talk about percentages, if we were going to go up to 5.74, that's about $660,000, down 5%, down a percent to 3.74, same deal. So the next slide shows around a district special education tuition, where we've been, where we were in FY23, where we currently are projecting, and what we're projecting for next year. So, you know, I think some of the good news here is that, as you can see in those columns and the headers, we are, we're seeing a slight decrease in the number of students who are placed out of district, and that's for a variety of reasons. But we were at 67 students in '23, and we're projecting to be at 61 in '25. And you can see just kind of the impact of the 14% increase going from FY23 to FY24. But what this outlines for you is how we fund this. So the general fund refers to the operating budget. That amount, if you go all the way over to the right-hand column, currently in this budget, we are carrying $3,247,000 in our operating budget, which is what is being voted on tonight to cover out-of-district tuition costs. We have IDEA money, which is federal grant money. You can see we're carrying the same amount of money, the $847,000 in the projected budget for next year as we have currently, because we won't know exactly what that dollar figure is for a few more months. But you can see, moving from FY23 to '24, it's, we wouldn't be expecting a large increase in those funds. Circuit breaker is a state fund, and is for extraordinary special education costs. There's a formula that goes with it. The state has funded, over the last several years, the maximum amount, which is 75%, and the calculation is based on, based on per student. If the amount of special education tuition or cost for that student's programming exceeds a certain amount of money, and it changes year-to-year and it's set year-to-year, then the state provides a circuit breaker, it kicks the circuit breaker, so that then the state kicks in money for that individual student's cost for that following year. The way that Winchester has always done this, which is the way it should be done, is that we don't spend money, we spend money that we have, we don't spend money that we're anticipating coming in. So when you look at that $256,700, that's money that is in our possession, that's not money that we're waiting to receive next year. Some school districts actually spend as they receive in the fiscal year. What this allows us to do, one, is just better planning, and we know what we have, and two, it just provides a cushion for us in case we have some, an extraordinary placement that might happen. We're, you know, we're, it puts us in much better shape, it's the right way to do it. We had ESAR funding for '23 and '24 that we applied to out-of-district tuition costs as well, and a lot of it was anticipation of the fact that we just don't receive a lot of other funding. So, you know, we had placement increase in placements, increase in costs. Those funds had to come from somewhere, it's appropriate use of the funds. We've done a couple of other things with ESAR funds. ESAR 1, as you all may remember, was PPE and masks and, you know, hand sanitizer and all of it. That was the bulk of that expenditure. And then we have also done a couple of facilities projects with this, including an upgrade of some of the HVAC at McCall ventilation units, and we are, we have an allocation right now on hold of about $180,000 for Parkers. That project hasn't happened yet, but we are carrying that money for an upgrade to Parker's HVAC, mainly the controls. The ARPA or IDEA, this is another grant that came out of COVID and federal pandemic funding we had available to us this year, $236,000. That was a one-time amount that we won't be receiving again next year. And then, so you can see the total budget allocation, just going across the bottom. We've gone from, you know, FY23, about $5 million to $6 million this, going into next year. I did make a note, just looking at going from FY24 to FY25, if you look at the note on the bottom, I'm sorry, from '23 to '24, of that increase from '23 to '24, $5.8 million of that would have been just based on the 14%. So we, you know, that we felt that impact in a very real way. And again, we are projecting, or we've been told that we could expect a 4.69% increase in tuition by the state. So, so just adding it all up, going down to the bottom, we have a total expense projection of 6.1 million, and just taking the very bottom row, you can see that we have been closing that gap, and that has been an effort, a conscious effort that we've been taking on, because if we don't close that gap, then what's happening is that we are using operating budget money from elsewhere to fund it at the end. So it's going to get funded one way or the other. We want to make sure that we appropriately budgeted to cover the costs in full. And I've had a recommendation that we just find that $9,499, because wouldn't it feel good to have that say zero? So that's up for discussion this evening. Enrollment projections. So we had the UMass Donahue Institute provide us with a Phase 1 enrollment study, which really focused on trying to get us a better look, a post-COVID look at what our enrollments were going to do. This was, that was Phase 1. We will be going into other phases as we move forward. This, really, the focus on this was get it to us as quickly as you can, with the best data that we can provide you. This will even be adjusted as housing data come in to the town that we'll share with UMass Donahue Institute. But as of this study on January 12, '24, you can just, this just shows you in the red, the changes in Massachusetts enrollment. It's, you know, the impact of the pandemic is pretty sharp, as you can see, that's where the drop is. And then you can see the change in our enrollment. So we, I mean, to a certain extent, it mirrored the state, but you can also see, when you go back to 2015, there was some heavy, coming off some years of some heavy enrollment growth here in Winchester, that I know the district felt and had to manage from both an operating budget standpoint, as well as from a facility standpoint. And then you can see that we're, you know, we are also rebounding a little bit more quickly now than the state's rebound, which I think is an interesting data point for us. What is driving that? You know, is it going, is it a trend? Is it going to continue? Which were the questions that we had put before UMass Donahue Institute. If you go to the next slide, the green does not represent money, just to be clear, but the green does represent students. This is two tables that UMass Donahue Institute provided to us. The top table is kind of a standard enrollment projection, it's based on something called the cohort survival method, where they essentially look at the number of births five years prior to that kindergarten class, and then they do a ratio. So they project how many of those kids, and it's a horrible term, but how many of those kids survived from, meaning stayed in town, so they were born here and they showed up in kindergarten for us. And then, what happens from K to 1? So if you kind of look at this diagonally, you'll see that those cohorts that move forward, we generally see an increase going from kindergarten to grade 1. That's not based on our birth data, but based more on students who are coming back to us from a private kindergarten placement, or there might be some move-ins, but we do experience that. That is consistent within the data. And then you can kind of see how it plays out over time and where those numbers go. And so you can kind of, if you can see the '24, '25, where that is, that is next year. '23, '24 is the year that we're in. So the projections go for up to '29, '30. The further out you go on these projections, as you can imagine, the less reliable they are, but what we really care about is these next two or three years, moving forward from a budget standpoint, but also from a capital standpoint, as we talk about not just Lynch, but also Morocco down the road. Morocco down the road. And then the bottom one is actually a COVID-adjusted, I'll go into the formula that they used to do that, and how, what they considered, but they really tried to look at the impact of COVID, and tried to adjust for it, saying, you know, essentially, what is more reasonable to expect? If you take the effect of COVID and the drop, decline that we saw in the previous slide, and kind of start to level that out, what might our enrollment projections look like? So that bottom table shows that. And we're trying to kind of figure out something in between, I think, as we talk about our class sections and sizes for next year. We do have some areas where we're feeling some pressure. We're definitely feeling some pressure at VO, in a couple of different grade levels, grade 2. We're feeling some pressure in, I can't name it off the top of my head, but a couple other grade levels, and a couple other schools. But in general, our class sizes are pretty favorable. And, you know, what we do know is though, is that when kids show up, they don't evenly distribute across our schools like they should. They show up probably, if, I'm just predicting that if it's grade 2 at VO, that's the problem. There'll be 35 kids moving into the district, and 34 of them will be at VO in grade 2. So that's how it goes. And that's what's kind of tough to manage year over year. And that's a conversation we always have with town meeting and FinCom, because there's a tendency to look at our K through 5 schools and say, well, here's your 5, K through 5 population, here's how many teachers we have, you know, do the math, you know? And, but it just doesn't work that way. So, and it creates equity issues. I mean, you know, there's certain points where you can't go from three teachers to two teachers, because it's the difference between going from, you know, 16, or 15, or 16 per class to going to 24 or 5. So, you know, it's part of the premium that we pay, as being, being in neighborhood schools, which we believe in, and I know the town believes in that. But it does, it creates some issues in, just in terms of kind of economy of scale, as we try to work through the numbers. And then this is just a grade span look. You can see the, up top, in the blue is grades K through 5. From '21, '22 to projected '24, '25, the middle is 9 through 12, and the bottom is grade 6 through 8. So you can see that, I mean, if you kind of just blur your eyes a little bit, it's pretty level. You know, we're not really, not seeing any kind of real growth one way or the other. The challenge of that is that, to the extent that we get any additional funding for more kids, is we just, we get even less funding because our population's not going up. So those, those per pupil allocations, we don't really benefit from really anyway, but we, we're not growing. So, but we're also not, we're also not declining in a way that we can reduce expenses. It's, it's not a good place to be from a budgeting standpoint, because there's, there's not much you can do either way. You're not going to get more revenue, and you really can't do a lot on the expenditures side. Obviously, you know, we don't want to be in a position where we're just, you know, able to cut because we're dropping kids so much. It is good news that we're stabilizing. You know, then the question just becomes, what do we think we're going to see over the next two or three years? There aren't any indications to think that we're going to really see the kind of explosive growth that the district saw several years ago. So, that's, that's good information for us to have for our own planning. And then the next slide kind of takes into consideration two of the residential housing developments, one River Street and one Cambridge Street. And this isn't all of them, but we wanted to, and have shown this slide, just to show what those projections look like, and what the impact in a range can be as projected on our grade spans. So when you look at grades K through 5, just going from left to right, where our current enrollment is 1837, well, October 1 count, I'm sorry, is 1848. We're projecting 1901 for next year. River Street is going to bring us anywhere from 30 to 35, not all in one year, right? Just to be clear, this is over a period of time. So we may start to see some of that, but that is the range that was projected for K through 5, when students, when the, when the developments open, and students and families start to arrive. And then you can just see the range on the far right-hand side. Okay. Any questions from the committee on any of that, before I roll into another exciting chapter? Michaela, anything?
(laughing)
All right. Stay with me, all right? All right. So the next is a roll-up summary sheet of all our cost centers, essentially. You can see Central Office, and that's, and the schools are listed, down to Special Education, Athletics, Technology, and People's Services. So this includes everything, all of the, everything that's in those lines. I'm not going to read through every one of them, obviously, but I, you're, just to kind of take you to the end of the story, part of what I wanted to point out, and the committee made the decision, what we presented to the, the school committee's finance subcommittee, is the idea, or the point, that when we report to the state at the end of the year, the state takes our information, and they, they make us report certain things in certain ways. We were not aligned with the state report in terms of how we were tracking these lines. So this is an effort to do that alignment, so that when we go in and look at data on the state, because the state puts out a lot of our financial information for all school systems, we want it to look as familiar and similar as we can. So the, the decision for, the committee made this year was to actually, specifically for the Central Office, was to remove those positions that don't get reported as Central Office. So what, the positions that we were, had been carrying in Central Office were, were positions like content directors, the director of nursing, director of SEL. So they were, they were curriculum-related content positions in that line. What the state considers to be Central Office, the superintendent's office, the business office, the curriculum, the assistant superintendents, those are the administrative positions, and any administrative support, that they consider to be Central Office. That when we report this, that's what they pull out of our data, and that's how they put it into the state, that's how we have to put it into the state report. So when you see the budgeted staff for the current year that we're in is 23.1, and the proposed staff is 12, and then the reduction in dollar figures is 1.5 million. I would love to tell you that I was able to cut 1.5 million out of Central Office. That's not what you're seeing. You're seeing a redistribution of those positions into the other cost centers here, as they are budgeted. For example, our content directors, most of them, many of them, most of them, also teach at the high school. So they teach a portion of their time at the high school. That was always budgeted at the high school, but what was not budgeted at the high school was their actual director time. That was budgeted in the Central Office. So what we've done is, most of our directors are at the high school and the middle school for their director responsibilities. So we have distributed that director piece of their, their salary into those two categories. And then you can just kind of see, as you go down through, the impact of the redistribution of those positions across all of the cost centers. And then you can see that, you know, we're still at the same FTE, but that's how we're structuring this budget this year. So the big, you know, in the bottom right-hand, far right-hand column in the bottom, you can see that is the 4.74% that we are sitting at right now. Transportation. Let me know if you've heard this one. So transportation, this just kind of breaks out how we fund transportation. It's important for people to know that the bus fees that the district charges doesn't even come close to covering the real cost of our transportation. So we budget for transportation, we pay for transportation in a couple of different ways. We have a revolving account, which is the account where fees come into. We use that as an offset to pay for a portion of our transportation costs. And then we have a budgeted dollar figure in that general fund, which is the operating budget. So we have that amount of money in the operating budget. And then for this current year that we're in, the select board approved $234,000 from ARPA funding to fund the increase in costs that we are experiencing, is the result of transporting the students to Parkers. So you can kind of see how that totals out. This is the year that we're in again, to where we are for our totals. And you can see that we're projecting right now, that we will have a year-end balance of about $323,000, $324,000. It's important for us to have that balance, because there are startup costs at the beginning of every single year. So for us to have, that is a good balance. It doesn't have to be that high, but balances are important in the transportation, because, you know, we don't collect all the fees all at the same time, and the contract and how we pay the contract out, happens over the course of the fiscal year. If you go to the next slide, you can see what we're projecting for FY '25, and just going back to my earlier comments, that this is how we would be covering, and not entirely, but this is how we, well, it's how we'd be covering the, the, the cost of the one remaining year of Lynch transportation to Parkers, if we do not receive any other additional outside funding sources. So you can see that, you know, we are expecting or projecting a total expenditure of 1.2 million. We have, we need $253,000. That's actually the cost of Lynch transportation. We don't have that funding for next year. And then you can see, we are looking at expenditures in the general fund of about $634,000, which we are not carrying currently. That's kind of a shortage. And then total expenditures that we'd be charging or expecting to charge off to the revolving account. So at the end of this year, essentially what we are proposing is taking that FY '24 year-end balance of $323,000, and applying it to fiscal year FY '25, to cover the, the Lynch transportation and the additional increases in the cost of the contract. So we would be ending the year in a, in a deficit of $47,000. There, you know, there are ways for us to consider that. And again, these are projected expenses, but we are going to have to grapple with that, that deficit at some point. Any questions on that? Okay. The next slide, and this is really, the committee received this information today. So it's really for just, it was, we wanted to distribute it to you. It's really not for conversation. It's more related to our fees discussion. As you know, in the athletics line, it's in the operating budget. We're, we're flat-funding it. We're not including any increase in the operating budget. But like transportation, we fund athletics through, also through the operating budget as well as fees. And we are projecting about, a budget next, next year, fiscal year '25, of 1.2 million or so. We are looking at projected deficit right now, about $157,000. But we have a year-end fund balance that we would, again, be covering that for FY '25. So we would be to the positive of the year-end fund balance going into FY '26. But part of this discussion, and part of what we want to show you, is that we are on a trend right now, where expenses are pacing our revenue. And we're going to have to have that conversation about how to manage that at some point. So in recognition of, and in response to, we have always, in previous years, provided priorities that were kind of outside of what we currently have in the budget. We do that for a lot of reasons, one of which is that there are times when funding becomes available for us, for whatever reason. Or it could be a retirement that we didn't expect. It could be just movement within positions. So if we have someone who takes a position somewhere else, and we hire at a lower rate. It could be a change in out-of-district tuition costs, a student moves out. I mean, there are all kinds of things that happen between now and next year. I mean, there's, you know, in fact, the timelines, I've said before, it is difficult to deliver a budget at the end of January for, that you're not going to even begin to expend until July 1, but really expend in earnest in September. So things can, things happen. It goes both ways. There are also, as I mentioned earlier, we could have a bunch of students move in at a particular grade level, at a particular area, a school, that we need to hire additional staff for. So that, you know, it is somewhat fluid. But what we would bring to you tonight for discussion, these are what we're bringing. Obviously, the committee has final say, and for a conversation, and may have some other thoughts or ideas as well. What we, one of the things that we have heard a lot about, and heard from, really from both teachers, but principals as well, is the need for additional math support. We do not have any math specialists. Currently, we do have 15 literacy specialists. We have a math content coordinator, who does a lot of work across the five elementary schools, but there's no staff beyond her, as is the case in literacy. So based on what we, we believe is a, is a need, our three-year goal would, would be to get to one position per building. That's, this is one step toward that. To do this in any way that's meaningful, we believe that we would need to hire two for next year. We would share those, those two positions, along with the, with the content coordinator, mathematics content coordinator, across our five schools. The intent, the focus of these positions would be to provide instructional and student support directly, but also coaching. And also, we would like to explore through these positions, some, some programming in computer science or coding, elementary coding, just in terms of logic, and integrating that within our math, what we do in mathematics. So again, that's a little bit of a conceptual thought. But the intent here with this is that we would like to set ourselves on a path of one math specialist per school over a three-year period. This is very similar to what you did with the social-emotional learning positions. You started out with funding some, some at a time, and then you, you reached a full complement of staff with those positions, actually last, last year, I believe. Yeah, I think last year was the first year we were at, we were at full, full staff, or, or one in every building, as well as at the middle school. The next, and these aren't necessarily in order of priority, this, these are just, these are what we believe would be extremely helpful in terms of programmatic additions. As we've been obviously hearing feedback around literacy, and trying to be realistic about what we think we can do. And I know that there are other thoughts about just overall curriculum and the implementation of a new curriculum. That's not what this is. And, you know, candidly, and, you know, the funding for that would put us in a situation where, depending on the grade span and when the cost of the program, would certainly exceed what we're talking about here. And, you know, we'd have to look for other funding for that kind of thing. But this is really a direct effort, in, because we've been hearing about tutoring, we've been hearing about needing some additional support. What we also recognize is that we have one of the shortest elementary school days in the Commonwealth, certainly in the area. We are adding 10 minutes next year, which is extremely helpful. There's no question about it. It puts us in a better position, but we're still, we still have a relatively short school day, although it may not feel like it at times. But we do. And so the question of, of really trying to provide more support, or providing more with the amount of time we currently have, I think is a dilemma. And we have students who, who definitely need more support. This is a proposal that would allow us to do that after school. These are rough numbers, but I wanted to show you just a couple of different scenarios. So that the, the goal of this would be, or this, as I've outlined it, is to provide three days per week of after-school support at all five elementary schools, doing two 15-week sessions. And we could kind of think about this as a pilot, to see, you know, looking at the first 15-week sessions, and just learn from that, to see, you know, how it goes, what the enrollments look like, and, you know, and really be able to also track some data on how, how our students are doing. We would be looking at small groups. This is more kind of intense support. We can't do this, that we wouldn't support doing this without providing transportation, because we also, while we have many families who would be able to pick children up, we also have families that we don't want to block access to. And we want to make sure that, that we are able to get them home. So this would be, again, three days per week. And I've costed it out just a couple of different ways, and I'll explain why. One teacher at $45 per hour, which is our current contractual rate that we use for tutoring, and we use for curriculum work, four hours per week. So it's three one-hour sessions, but for every three hours, we provide one hour of prep time. So that's, that would be the actual cost. So that four hours is actually three hours of actual instruction and one hour of prep. If we do that, one week of that for one teacher would cost $180. And then you can just extrapolate that over the 15 weeks. So 15 weeks, one teacher, is 27, 30 weeks is 54. We're talking one teacher. Now you do it at five schools, 15 weeks is 13.5, 30 weeks is $27,000. And then five weeks, 15 weeks, I'm sorry, at And then five weeks, 15 weeks, I'm sorry, at five schools with three teachers because the reality is it's going to be unlikely that it would just, we would just need one person to do this in most of our schools. But just to show you what does it look like with three teachers, that amount is 15 weeks is 40,000, 30 weeks is 81,000. So the next category, and it's nice that the president of WEA is here at the same time. The next category just tries to be reflective of what our experience is because, you know, we've not been able to hire people for some of our summer programming, after-school programming. We want our own people to do this, but what we know is that the market for tutors is, pays more than 45,000, $45 an hour. So if we're going to be realistic about it, and I don't know whether $75 is the right number, but I picked it. If we're going to be realistic about it, we really need to think about this because what we don't want to do is commit to something and then not be able to staff it, which has been our experience. This has a ripple effect implications and clearly would need to be negotiated with the WEA, but it also has a ripple effect because that $45 per hour is what we pay for curriculum work. So we, we very much value the curriculum work. We don't want to lose people and have them say, well, I can make $45 an hour doing this or 75. So it has a potential impact beyond what we're showing here, but I, I think it's important to show it. And maybe there's a way to talk about how this is different than something else. But anyway, I'm not going to negotiate it here, but I want to show you the cost breakout. So doing the same math as, or the same three scenarios as we had up above, 15 weeks, one person, 4,500, 30 is 9,000, 15 weeks, five schools, you can see that, 30 weeks is 45,000, 15 weeks, five schools, three teachers, 15 weeks is 67.5, 30 weeks is $135,000. Transportation is flat out, and I do think we have an opportunity to negotiate this, but what we have right now in the, in the contract that we just put out to bid is $225 a day. That's for an extra after-school bus. If we did this and we were able to do it with consistency, we, we more than likely could go back to the company and talk about this as essentially another tier, right? Because we're not, how we have it priced out is all the buses have gone home for the day and they're going to send one back out, right? This would be timed up so that we would be, they'd finish that drop-off of the secondary run and then three of those buses would peel off and come, I don't know whether three's the right number either. Three of those buses would come back and they would do essentially a tier that would pick up our students who would be staying after school for this programming. We believe we need about, it'd be about an hour and a half between drop-off or pickup of elementary run. And by the time we got back to the elementary school would, would probably be about an hour and a half. Obviously, you know, I haven't calculated in what that looks like in terms of coverage, but I don't think we're going to be doing more than an hour worth of tutoring. So then probably kids are going to be hungry, they might be, you know, whatever it might be. So haven't, you know, there are pieces of this that clearly would be need to thought through more. However, I do think this is a pretty good estimate. I mean, I think this provides us good information, you good information about what we could do. And this is a lot of, and candidly, for the amount of money that we're looking at, I think, in either scenario, this is, this is a lot of service for not a huge amount of money. And so, and I think it's doable. I think even if we can't get it into this budget, we can still pursue this in different ways. It doesn't commit the district to ongoing year-over-year costs, but it provides direct services to kids, which is what we all care about because we all care about kids and we all care about kids literacy. There's no question about that. We also know that we have teachers who are, we have, we have great teachers. We want our teachers to be able to provide this if they have the stamina and the, and the strength to stand up at the end of the day and also take some of this on, which is it, I'm joking, but I'm not joking. It's a legitimate issue because we ask, teachers have families, right? So they have commitments outside of school, after-school. So I don't even know how well it would staff. It's conceptual in, in that, you know, we don't know what it would be. It would be kind of a pilot, but I think if we're going to do it, we should do it with fidelity and make the commitment to it and, and see, and see how it goes. And we could do a lot of pre-work on this. We could do some surveys. We could work through our, through the schools, through the principals to see, you know, what would it be like? How would people feel about this? Would you be interested in doing it? So we can start to really kind of, you know, play it out a little bit more. Haven't even thought about what kids are we going to say that kids who we've identified who need the support, you know, who is it open to? None of those details are included, so don't ask me any questions about that because I don't have any answers for you. But that's just the cost structure. Finally, you know, I think it's time and for us to really put some money into our performing arts program. And we do a lot for not a lot of money here. And we did, you did, prior to my arrival through the last override, included a position at the middle school, which is fantastic. But I think we need to start really thinking about, one, funding what we currently do at the high school in particular, but two, also trying to provide some kind of performance opportunity for students at the middle school. Like one thing next year, you know, and, and really try to put on a McCall Middle School Performing Arts production. This is just seed money. I don't know how far this goes, how far it doesn't go, but I think it's important for us to signal that we value performing arts. I candidly have been surprised in, in coming here about the level of, of programming that we do offer in the performing arts compared to some other school systems that I've been in. And then there are all kinds of reasons for that, obviously. There are a lot more opportunities that are within the community and within the general area than there are in places, other places that I've been and the school had to provide it or it just didn't happen. But I, I think it would provide students who aren't otherwise inclined to play athletics or do instruments, an opportunity to really try something, experience it. I think it starts to build a program too. So you start to have students who are engaged at the element, at the middle school level, who start to then go up into the high school level and, and maybe it changes how they feel about what they want to do moving forward. So yeah, I, I think it is. I think it is, it is important. I think it's investment that we should make at some point, not suggesting, you know, this year or next year, but I wanted to put it on the table and I know there's interest and many other, some of the committee members here have, have talked to me about this and I, I, I do value it and I believe it's important, so. So then you can see the kind of the range of that total impact. And I've just brought that down to this final slide that shows the 4.74% budget that we're talking about right now. And then with those programmatic additions in that range, on the range with literacy support, the low estimate and the high estimate. Having said all that also, there are other funding sources the district has leveraged for programming. I mean, from, from literacy, WIFI has funded, it came up earlier, you know, the whole ramp up to wireless was funded by WIFI. We're very fortunate to have WIFI. I know they've also funded some, some areas around literacy. They funded other grants. You know, if, if it were the case that we needed to, to find, if we, if we needed funds to do something else, I believe we have avenues to get there depending on the amount that we're talking about. And I wanted to say, and I've said it earlier, you know, I am committed to an open, honest conversation about this and that's, I'm not going into this with any preconceived ideas of where we want to come out of it. It's important to me that we hear from everybody because I don't think we are hearing from everybody. And while I appreciate the emails and I appreciate the public comment, you know, I think we need to really dig down into giving opportunities for our staff to, to talk about this in, in an honest way, that we can produce data that we use, can use and that we need. I think there, you know, we also need to clarify some of the comments that have, you know, understandably, just there's some misconceptions about what we do and what we don't do, that I think it's a good opportunity for us, one, we can talk about it, but two, we can go into this process and really understand, you know, there is what we say we do and what's available, but what is the day-to-day experience of teachers and what are they doing? And what would they need and what do they feel they need support in? Because we all support teachers. So, you know, with, with that, I just want to say that this doesn't, may not go as far as what some people might want in terms of dollars of, of that investment, but I think this makes a real impact on kids and that's what I was really focused on. And then I just would say that, you know, if we needed some additional funding, there are some other ways that we might be able to look at that as you have done in the past. So with that, I'm happy to answer or not answer, struggle and be embarrassed by not being able to answer questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Nixon?
I have many, and I'm going to ask you a question you just told me not to ask you. But before I get to that, could you or Jen just talk, with respect to the math specialist, can somebody just speak to the math coach role that we put in place, gosh, eight years ago, seven years ago? How does the math coach support elementary schools?
Math reader?
Take it. I'm reaching for gum and trying to drink some water.
Mr. Nixon, can I qualify first? Are you talking about Julie McRoney-Gorman? Because I think she's like the K5 director.
I don't want to talk about like individuals, but just talk about what.
No, but I'm talking, are you talking about that position?
I'd like to just hear what our math supporting role is in the district today.
So we have a 1.0 who is a K to 5, although she has started to also work with preschool, math coordinator who works across our, on any given year, 100-plus classrooms, focuses on curriculum, professional development and coaching.
And Dr. Hackett, do you, it may be too early for you to sort of articulate this, but with the math specialist position, do you have a sense of what that day looks like for that person?
What the day looks like?
Yeah, that role. That, how would that role? Is that role evenly split K through 5? Or were not specific tasks? And how does that, how would that fit into a structured elementary day?
I, I think that's an open question, right? So I think it's, you know, let's explore the position if we're going to fund the position and let's be open to the idea that it can, it will, can grow and change as it goes into. We would identify the first part of it and what we think it's going to look like, but I, I wouldn't want to shut it off to what it may be the real experience of that, that those positions. I think that, you know, we, we may look at data and say we have a greater need in some places than others. I think all of our schools could use math specialist support. Candidly, our kids could use, our staff could, could use that support. So that's the idea of trying to get to one per school. But I also want to remain obviously open to the idea that the needs might be different. And that could be shifting needs. I mean, it could depend on a particular group of kids for a particular period of time. So I'm, I'm answering you in a way that doesn't answer you, but I really don't, I mean, I really.
Okay, you told me not to ask.
That's all right. No, I think we just need to be flexible with how, what that experience looks like and the feedback we get from, from staff.
Mr. Nixon, was your, was your question an equity question or is it just understanding the role?
So I sometimes am really deliberate when I, so I think the question.
I always go into your questions thinking that I could be getting set up for another question.
You shouldn't feel that way.
I just say, I stay on my toes.
So no, no, it wasn't really an equity question. I liked, I, I try to ask my questions as clearly as I can. I guess I meant it just the way I, I phrased it, though I apologize, I said math coach, not math coordinator. So that, that's exactly what I was looking for. With respect to performing arts, I'm glad that was on your closing slide because I feel like we did, we did start to make some progress and some investments there and then COVID got in the way. At least that's my impression about how that timeline worked. A lot of good effort was made with the previous superintendent and I'm sort of, I'm sympathetic to that, you know, that gesture and, and supportive of, of some investment. I, I mean, I think it would be incumbent on us to be able to articulate, once again, you know, how, how would that be spent? Specifically for what? How does that impact student experience? But I think that belongs on a slide and it belongs, you know, part of the conversation. I would be, I'd be amenable to some, you know, adjustment if committee members felt strongly about that. And then my third question, I'm just asking questions about what you presented. I had a couple of other thoughts on the budget I'll save for, you know, a little bit later. But with respect to the, the literary, literacy piece, can you go back one, Andrew? So I, I get it. We can't, we, it's too early to determine like, so who are these kids? How do we define these kids? So my understanding is, I'm going to make sort of a corollary, like at our LBLD program at VO, I know we, we don't have like second graders in the room with fifth graders and, you know, vice versa. So there, for, for this to be a meaningful experience, there has to be some sort of relative closeness, right, in terms of age and grade level. That's the case sort of during the school day. I would, I would presume that the same idea would apply here, but I don't know that it has to. So short of telling, asking you, how would we define the kids? Would you similarly think like this might be a K2 thing or a 3.5 thing and it might be different at each school depending upon what the needs are at each school, but it, it couldn't realistically be K5, or could it?
I would, I mean, based on, I would want to start by exploring this as a K2 to begin.
Okay. I appreciate that.
That being the focus. It could, you know, and then again, see, see where we go. And I'm thinking about students who aren't in or receiving a host of services as part of their, part of their day. I'm really kind of thinking of the students that we know that, you know, who need some support. They may or may not have an identified need, but we, you know, students that we know could use and, and would benefit from some additional time.
And because we would ideally be using WEA teachers and staff, the kids are staying in the building, would this be, could this be seen by parents and families as an option for, like for instance, accommodation in an IEP? If, if this is a, this is a district service, it's in the building, do we know? Is that?
I don't know and I wouldn't even want to even venture a guess on that. That's not how I was thinking about it.
And the reason I'm asking that question is if, if it is seen by some as eligible, for instance, for like part of that service delivery from an IEP, you may have sort of a population that's looking for that, but justifiably so. But, but there may be a different group of students, right, that could be well-served by this who are not on IEPs.
And that's the group I'm kind of thinking about.
That's what I thought.
I think we would be advised that this would not, we would not want this in an IEP because we can't guarantee this like we can guarantee within a school day.
Okay.
Can I follow up with a few questions about the literacy and some alterations with that? So, Dr. Hackett, I, I was thinking about the enrollment that we were talking about last time and hearing from some of the families about consistency of program. And one of the things that I noticed that we've talked about here before is that we used to get a large jump of our students between kindergarten and first grade. There were always people who chose Montessori kindergarten, private kindergartens, they wanted the consistency for their kids that pre-K, K. But since COVID, we've seen a tremendous jump in our students that is different. We're getting a larger bolus of students from first to third grade where our, pre-COVID, we used to see a delta of maybe seven students, 10 students who would move in. Now I see numbers that are more like 40 or 50. And when we're talking about consistency of program delivery, I just, it makes me, it makes me wonder how many of these kids have been with us for our literacy program from K through third grade too? That's just sort of an open question and an observation out there because I think, you know, a program like you're suggesting could help close that gap too because some, some kids may have been experiencing different kinds of literacy instruction or intervention and helping them be served by our teachers and evidence-based methods that we're using here consistently over time might be extremely helpful for them as well. And the other thing that I would just note about that is, is that I'm so glad to see it here because in your first year with us, we did submit an ARPA request to the town as well for a summer tutoring program, very similar to this. And, you know, we really had no response from the town and we consistently hear from the finance committee and the select board that we need to cut our budget year-over-year, even our level-funded budgets that have not had a lot of program improvement. So I love that we have really detailed out the cost of what something like this is because I think that's half of communicating our need is communicating the cost. And what the real funding issue for us is in trying to make things happen that we, as a committee and, and a leadership team have raised a red flag on for quite some time that we need more support around. So I, I think this is helpful to us as a committee to be able to articulate it to, to other groups in town too. So as much as we can sort of flesh out those costs a little bit more around this and really get a good sense, I know there's also a lot of evidence base for double-dose instruction. So it's not just. So it's not just pullouts during the school day, but it's being able to give kids more time and more exposure to material and more practice. So I, I just, I really like it. I think it's a good way to go and it might help bridge a gap for some of our families and take the burden off of some of those families who feel like their kids are really struggling with literacy and build that into our tax funding and our, our budget. So I'm supportive of that. And I mean, I think I've said enough about performing arts at this table over the last couple of months that I, you know, I'm fully in support of that as well. And we've just seen the impact that adding extra specialist support at our elementary level has had for our kids. And honestly, for our teachers, I think that it's, as we get more diverse and more just kids from, we're, we're not getting kids who, like I said, and we used to, start with us in kindergarten, stay with us through 12th grade. And we are seeing a lot more kids with social emotional needs in the classroom. And the more we can push in to our classrooms, the kind of support in math and literacy that really help teachers do the job better with the kids in front of them. I think that that's supporting teachers in a way that, you know, it's not measurable like, like, like being able to pay them more. But if they are having a better experience in their day because they feel supported for getting the kids the help they need that are standing right in front of them, I think all three of these things would be valuable to bring before the town and ask, you know, ask the town what they value as well.
Ms. Bell, may I say, Mr. Brady, you have questions, comments?
I guess I also appreciate the detail that is provided here. And that you've talked about these three areas and then also that there, you can also see the span across elementary school and sixth through 12th grade. But not a lot of questions, but I appreciate it.
Mr. Brady, any comments, questions?
Yeah. I like that we're proposing things that are going to serve students directly. I definitely think that's important. I think we also need to include something in terms of curriculum, professional development for literacy. So I would say that's another piece that I'm interested in. So I definitely appreciate, appreciate all this. I would not, not want any of this, but I think we also need to give ourselves some room for that because we're going to be doing work this spring. And they don't want us to do work and then find out that we don't have any funds to take any steps next year. Again, it's going to be a multi-year process, whatever it is we do. But I feel like it would be helpful to have some additional funds for, again, literacy curriculum, literacy, professional development to support our teachers, to get the materials that they might need. So I think that would be my comment. So I, I think I appreciate the amount here, but I, I would wonder if we need more. So, you know, I would say we're, we're looking at $390,000 here. I wonder, do we need another 100 or 200,000 for curriculum, professional development related to literacy? You know, that's something I'd certainly be in support of and interested in adding in if, if we are adding things.
Yeah, so, so I would, I'm curious about that as well. And I'm looking forward to our meeting on the, on the 13th where we can, I'd like to actually see where we are in these different categories. You know, on, on this, I am troubled and have been troubled over time about, you know, just the structural challenges we have as a town around finance and, and how, you know, looking at how the budgets work here in the school committee where, you know, the contractual, you know, steps and lanes basically use up more, more of our space than, than the town even will give us. And so every year we're fighting and it seems every year, you know, we come back with, you know, a fractional Mandarin speaker, teacher, or, or some very small piece. And so, you know, I do like these, all three of these proposals in different ways. I mean, I have a kid who gets pullout services three days a week and, you know, and I wonder, should he be five days? And, and I don't know if he would qualify because if it's only first and second grade, he probably wouldn't. But I'd rather have him in something after school than being pulled out every day, you know? And so I think these are, you know, really good proposals here. And, and I, I do wonder about the, the distribution. You know, and I think, I think you've articulated this as a starting point on both the math and the literacy, you know, but, but obviously, much like our enrollment doesn't always show up in the same place, you know, kids' needs don't show up in the same places. And so I'd urge, you know, the flexibility to be able to, you know, search, support our kids, you know, into, you know, to load balance the system. Though it sounds like even with this, and I don't know what the demand is, but I suspect that, you know, if we're talking only serving, you say K through two, I believe.
Yeah, and I just would caution everyone, I was forced to answer the question. And there are people who know a lot more about literacy than I do. I'm not a literacy expert. So this would need additional feedback and thinking.
So I'll just say, I, I think it's really good. I think that we're, I think the town will, will need to do something around its finances. And I think we should, I think we should bring this to the town personally. I, I think these are the needs that we're articulating here. And it's, and there's a separate process that's going to be happening starting, you know, the next meeting, which is a whole separate conversation. But in terms of this budget now, yeah, I'm surprised of all three of these.
Dr. Hackett, do we have money in our budget for literacy curriculum? It looked like we had a line item.
Well, I guess it depends on the scale, right? I mean, you know, I appreciate the question about, you know, go back in and look at your lines and, and, you know, get, you know, reallocate money. The reason why I show the per pupil and the reason why it's important is because we are, that has a direct impact on our ability to do anything beyond respond to our, our enrollment-driven needs, to special education needs, to contractual needs. I mean, you know, we can huddle together some money, right? So it depends on, yeah, we do have money budget for curriculum. I'm going to tell you, it's, it's not what it should be. And, you know, to Mr. Brady's point, I mean, if, if the question is, you know, certainly, we're not going to sit here and tell you that we don't want more money. I've just been living through this experience with you all for three years now, and I, I know what the next steps of this look like, right? And I know what the questions are going to be. And I appreciate the enthusiasm for wanting to increase our budget, but, you know, when it comes down to it, it's us that are getting those questions and getting pounded on and advocating. I mean, the work for us just begins now, as far as I'm concerned. I mean, getting to this point is a lot of work, but getting this through, wherever we land on it, is, is the work. And I, and again, I think the per pupil matters because it provides some context for, and I have nothing but respect and appreciation for the, the tax burden that happens here because of the way we're funded. It's all residential, you know, and we're, one department of the town, albeit the biggest department of the town. But, you know, there's no room, like, I mean, there's no, you know, we can zero-based budget all day long. I, you can't, you can't, you know, turn, you know, you just can't get any more juice out of a stone when it comes to a certain point. So an investment in a curriculum, when we're really talking about what would be hundreds of thousands of dollars, right?
Right.
You've got, thought before.
A million, probably.
Probably knocking on a million. And it's not just the investment in the upfront cost because we could probably find a way to get money for that. It's the ongoing cost of, and it's the, it's the focus of the district. It's the professional development time, if we're going to do it right. And it's year over year consumable cost, it's year over year. So it's a commitment. We do a lot of that now, where there's a lot of money spent now. But when you ramp up, you better do it right and you better know what you get into because whatever we decide to do, if we're going to do anything differently, if, if it's truly a full-blown, you know, curriculum in a box kind of thing, that, we're going to be living with that for 10 years. So, and I'm not saying it's a bad thing. I'm just saying that, you know, we really need to be thoughtful about that investment. And there are wrong choices in that. There are definitely wrong choices in that. You know, and I would, I've shared with you, I directed you to Desi's website, go to the curate website where they recommend, here are the, here are the programs that Desi recommends. And you go to the far right-hand column and not one of them has any data on student achievement, not one of them. I mean, so to, to advocate for anything right now without the benefit of having these, the programs kind of play out a little bit more and be more researched, I don't, you know, we don't want to go into a situation where we really don't know what we're getting. And I appreciate all the comments about our approach, the philosophy, what we do. We'll have, you know, we'll talk about what we do on the 13th, but that level of investment, I don't see it in a budget. I don't see how we do that when it's 1% is $660,000. We'd be rolling in at about 7% or 8%. Now, you know, if there's an infusion of money, whether it's through an override or whether we find money through other sources, and which is what I think this district has done a good job and of doing, then, you know, I think that's our best bet. Funding $100,000 to Mr. Brady's point is that's a different conversation, right? And that helps, I mean, definitely helps.
Well, it's a different level of investment. It's not in curriculum.
Right, right, right.
It's curriculum materials, not.
It's materials, it's, you know, the ability, maybe the ability to explore some things. I mean, it, it absolutely helps.
Just a quick follow-up on that.
Yeah.
So, and what I heard, so many of the public comments tonight and in previous nights also say is that it's, it's practices and approach, it's not a single curriculum also. So when we're going forward with the work that you've recommended we do, I think that there is a question in there for me of how do we define the practices that we already do that meet that approach? And then what curriculum materials do we need to support what we may not do? It's just an open question.
So maybe rather than pushing on a million dollars, if we're already doing $100,000 of that.
Right.
We might be partway there.
Right.
That's why I say professional development and curriculum because I don't think of the one or the other. I think we need to invest in both.
And I would just say, you know, to the question of do we have the money? And we have, we have money in the budget for curriculum work, we have money in the budget for professional development, it's not enough, period. And we're talking about one content area, right?
Right.
We're talking about all content areas, what we have in the budget. So, you know, additional funding for that would absolutely be more than helpful. I mean, you know, I'd love to be able to sit here and tell you that, you know, we need 300, $400,000 more in professional development funding or, or supply funding. But, you know, like I said, we're the ones who have to go through and get this budget approved. None of it matters if we can't get this through, right? It's all for naught. And we can justify, and I think we justify every penny, but it amazes me that even with the low per pupil, and I get it, you know, people have a job to do, they have a role to do as they go, we go through this process, it's true democracy at the local level. But the assumptions that get made about what we have in this budget or that we're spending too much money or that we have too many administrators or that we, I mean, you know, it's, it's a process. And I think, you know, we know, we go into this knowing that there are people who, it is their goal or their job, you know, they really believe to cut us, right? So, and that's fine, right? That's what it is. And when we go through that, so, but I also want to be, you know, I'm trying to be mindful of what is realistic. So part of what I wanted to recommend tonight on that last slide, or second to last slide, were things that, you know, the one thing we, like, so the math specialist, I don't see any other way to fund that but through the operating budget. That's a commitment to personnel, right? So that is to me, we would need to fund that in the operating budget. When we look at that, that whole other category, we can do, we can do a variety of levels of that, right? And it's not a commitment to bringing people who are new on and saying, here's your job, but you may not have it next year because we can't fund it. It's, it's really trying to leverage our existing staff. And it's, and we can scale it to whatever level, one, that we think we need and two, we think we can afford, right? We may get into this and, you know, get in 15 weeks and think, you know, well, we really don't need, need three buses, one, you know, two buses will do it, or one bus will do it. So the good news with that is we can bring on another bus tomorrow. Like we have the flexibility of the busing company to be adaptable. But I think, you know, I wanted to present something that is real and most importantly, something that gets services to kids because, you know, you can't do, yeah, I mean, yeah, you can't do, you can't do more in time that we already don't have enough of. So, you know, I, I think it's a realistic proposal that if we couldn't get this to the budget, I think we could figure out a way to do some level of this. I think even in the 50,000 performing arts, I think we could find out a way to do some level of this. I don't want to bring things to you or bring things to the community or bring things to administrators or teachers or put it out there, you know, of just offering false hope like, you know, like, here we go again, what's our wish list? And, you know, we don't get through the first meeting before it slash, right? I, I really want to be realistic in trying to do something that matters and has an impact, but also that we, that we might have ability to fund some other way, not easily, but, so, you know, that's the intent with this.
Can I just clarify, Dr. Hackett? I think 50 grand for performing arts goes quickly. So I, when I said it would be good to articulate exactly what it's for, I'm not, I'm not doubting that.
Oh, it's no way, yeah, absolutely.
I think that's a very reasonable suggestion and it's why I support it. If I can sort of share, I want to share with the committee sort of where my head is as I'm, I'm hearing all this and come back to it, a couple of other observations on the mutants backup. I can, I'm intrigued by what's in the middle of the slide. It's a model we know how to do. I appreciate there are a lot of moving parts. I think one of the most important points you made, Dr. Hackett, was that delta between what, you know, what we pay for curriculum development on an hourly basis, that's, that's kind of an elephant in the room. I, I'm feeling like I can support an approach like this. You've given us some suggestions, you've given us a range, as you said, you know, the transportation is highly variable as well. In my head, I'm thinking I could support funding this and I would propose $175,000 as a working number, understanding we will learn a lot, you know, in the coming months about areas we need to focus on. We can learn, we take some time to understand what kids would be served by this program. I'm there, I'm, I'm supportive of the $50,000 for performing arts. And then to Mr. Brady's point, you know, if we call it PD slash curriculum, and this isn't about a big investment in something we live with for the next 10 years, I'm actually thinking more about what we learn in the short term or medium term as we go through this exercise. And also want to underscore something you said earlier. It's so, two things I want to say, I think it's very important for us to be clear with, with the community, many of whom know that we were approached in 2021, but seem not to be aware of what we did do after 2021, not be aware of consultants we hired, reports we got, feedback we got from teachers, feedback we got from parents. I think it's really going to be helpful for us to be clear about what we were doing then, sort of what we're doing today. I especially care what the teachers say. Because I, I sense, and I think we've gotten some reports in the past couple of years that even suggest there can be a disconnect between the impression that, you know, some teachers have versus some parents. But it's all one community, we got to find a way to work together. And that's why we pay you the big bucks. So that's going to be a really important exercise. Anyway, back to my, my third point. Because this isn't about a big investment in something we live with for the next 10 years, I just want to be sure we're, we're adequately funding some low-hanging fruit, if I can call it that. I hope people don't think of that as a pejorative. I mean, I could say, let's put in another 50 grand and call it professional development slash supplemental literacy curriculum funding. I realize that that may have a target on its back because it's, it sounds a little squishy, but I could be supportive of that. And, you know, that comes to $275,000. But I'm not making a motion yet. I also wanted to thank you, at the last meeting I had asked about our extended year program. And where we have some of our sort of neediest kids, without that care and feeding, they're going to sort of slide right over the summer. Because it wasn't quite clear to me how we were, you know, encumbering those funds. As you all know, we made a big. As you all know, we made a big investment through our last round of collective bargaining, so that we can staff that program, and there's some real consequences to that for us financially. So, I wanted to thank Mr. Marin, because he did, he pulled together some information for me, was it today, yesterday? And, and had a conversation with you, Dr. Hackett, so I'm, I'm feeling better about kind of what this looks like now. Can you maybe take a moment, just talk about a change you've made
Sure, sure.
In that respect, because I do, that's an important element of our district, and especially for certain kids.
So, in our extended-year program, the conversation with, that Mr. Nixon and I had, and Andrew had, and again, some of this is, is an artifact of, of budget that, you know, that we inherited from going into the first year that I was here, that had already been approved, and, and reduced, by the way, by town meeting floor, fairly substantially. What you recommended was cut at, on the town meeting floor for, for that fiscal year. But it had been a while, and in, you know, COVID just was, was COVID, right? So, there was just a lot of, some things we just did not have the opportunity, or the time, or the energy, or whatever, to really examine, from a, just from a budget standpoint, because we were just so focused on trying to get through, you know, providing vaccines and, you know, all the rest of it for that first year. So, but, and, and there's some question, and, I'm sorry, I should be a little bit more specific, I'm talking about our extended-year program, and I don't have the line.
You're talking about, that I asked about as well, the summer programming?
Yep, yes, the summer programming. Andrew, can you point me to the line, or?
It's on page 19.
Thank you. So, all right, so on page 19.
It's like the eighth one from the top.
Eighth one, five, it's 51163 is the object code. So, the extended school year. So, you can see what the actuals were from '21, '22. The unique thing about this program is that we actually implement the program prior to the start of the school year, in the fiscal year that we're budgeting. So, for FY '24, when you look at, you know, we, we know what we spent over the course of the summer for the program, and we know that our actuals were, are higher. So, we had not really made an adjustment to that dollar figure that we were carrying, and had been carrying for a while. And partly, you know, we know that there was a, certainly an increase in need and demand when we were coming out of COVID. We're not entirely sure whether that will continue, although Mr. Nixon pointed out that we did negotiate with Unit C some extended-year additional time and, and money to be able to deal with that issue of, can we hire people to do this? We basically put a premium on the extended-year programming, so that is a built-in and relatively known cost. So, we just had not accounted for that and, and made the adjustment. So, in conversations today, what we did was, we did bring that number up, from what you had seen last time, to a proposal, a proposed budget of 178,815, which is about an $85,000 increase. We did that and stayed within the actuals number that we had by, we have been continuing since last, last time to examine where we are in, in certain other areas, and we were able to cover that within, within the budget, within the dollar figure. You know, and it, it had been expended, it would have been over-expended for the last couple of years, so it's, it's, it's important to make that adjustment, and, you know, I think it also services a lot of, some of the conversation that we were having tonight about just providing that additional outside of the school year and regular day support.
And to clarify, that number is substantially basically our FY '24 spend, right?
Right, it is, it is.
Because there's this, EYP, or excuse me, ESY is this sort of weird animal in this spreadsheet, because for almost everything else in the budget, you don't know really what you've spent for FY '24 till you get to June 30th.
Right, right.
But there, you know, this is something that's actually now in the rearview mirror.
Right.
So.
And for some reason, we carry the FY '21 number into FY current year, FY '24, and I can't explain that.
So, can this line contribute towards this?
No.
No, I
Yeah.
One is special education.
I wouldn't suggest so.
Is more general education.
But I, so I, I wanted to thank you for this. I think, I think this is very reasonable, and although we, we've seen some pretty sharp, in fact, double-digit increases year over year, what this is basically saying is we're taking FY '24 actual spend and just pushing it forward to '25 with no planned increase, you know, presumably just because at some point that COVID impact should wane.
Right.
I, seems reasonable to me, so I wanted to thank you for that.
I appreciate the conversation.
And then, so the only other comment that I wanted to have about budget is, Adam Johnson was a hockey player who died in October in a really tragic accident. USA Hockey, two days ago, so after our last school committee meeting, voted to adopt the Canadian policy and require all hockey players, U-18 and younger, to wear armored net guards. So, that would apply to our athletes next year, boys and girls, varsity and subvarsity, and because, you know, this is a safety equipment, just like a football helmet or a hockey helmet, I'm feeling strongly, so this is like my Mandarin moment from last year, except I'm arguing for much less money than I did last year for Mandarin. I feel that, well, we will get to a conversation around fees for athletics, I don't feel sort of pushing safety equipment, you know, onto parents and families is really the right way to go. So, it's an unfunded mandate, but I think it's, it's important, maybe just out of principle. So, I would actually suggest that in addition to the 275 that I just ran through for those three things, 4,500 bucks in addition for Mr. Aria would allow the district to procure net guards for all those kids next year, and I think we should do it. And if we were to do that, and the superintendent welcomed that last suggestion, that would bring it up to an additional $279,500. And that amount, on top of what Dr. Hackett has brought forward tonight, comes to a grand total of, I think my math is right, $3,277,066.60, that would be a 5.18% increase, which is sort of right, maybe if Andrew goes to the next slide. I mean, it's a little below that low estimate, but, you know, more than what he's been bringing to us so far.
Can I just ask a clarification? So, on, on the prior slide, your recommendation was not to support the mathematics at all, the literacy would be at 175,000, performing arts at 50, another 50 for curriculum, and PD
So, just to be clear, I'm not saying I don't support mathematics, but
Just your proposed, you just didn't mention it, and so I just wanted to be clarified.
I didn't mention it, I, I'd like to understand more about how it would work.
Then I have a comment, back to you, Mr. Nixon. I'm uncomfortable adding for professional development and curriculum, and the thing you just mentioned, while I support both of them, because I also would like to know more about that, because I think it sends a false sense to the community when we just pick a number out of the air, like $50,000 or $100,000 for something like professional development or curriculum replacement, until we have an idea of what that costs. Because $50,000 may be more than we need, or it may be a drop in the bucket. And I would like to get a better sense of what the size and scope and need is, and I'd like to know from Mr. Aria whether he thinks he can cover those things in the budget he has, too, before we just add it to our budget. So, I, I, I feel strongly that we should go forward with what we need. If we're saying our kids need more support, and we're ignoring mathematics along with the literacy, I think we ask for what we think we need to support our kids and get them, move them forward. I don't think we value one over the other, I think we do both. And we go forward and we see if we make the case. We've made the case to the town before for a half million dollars in kindergarten aids, when we needed it. And this town supported a half million dollars in kindergarten aids. If we think we need more mass support, if we think we need literacy support after the school day next year, we go forward and we tell people that's what we need, and we let Dr. Hackett and his team do the work on literacy, and determine what we need, and how much professional development costs that meets that need. And then we continue to have discussions with the town manager and the finance committee, and let them know what that need is. I mean, that's our job to communicate that. But I feel like picking 50 or $100,000 out of the air for that is just disingenuous.
Well, I don't, I don't think it's disingenuous, I think it's, to your point, it's signaling to the community that it's something that we want to take action on, because if we don't have any money to take action with, then we're waiting a whole nother year.
But we have until May to add to our budget, Mr. Brady. While we vote our budget today, we have until May to do that. Dr. Hackett's just committed to a process to determine what we need. I would like to go through that process, determine what we need, and then come back and say, we need more money. Not only do we need another $50,000, we need another $200,000, and this is the reason why.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we could also reduce between now and May, as we did last year, so it's not, again, we're voting what we're
Tell me what $50,000 will buy us.
Well, in fairness, I can't, I can't really tell you what some of this is actually going to look like either. I mean, I'm wondering whether or not it makes sense for the committee to think about that elementary literacy, that whole category, as a dollar figure, that we then figure out, as we work through details, about what, what do we want to do, and, and make it a little bit more fungible in terms of, because we may find that, as we really go through the process, that we don't need all of that, we may need, I mean, so, because we do need time, right? And that's part of what I'm trying to say is
That's part of my point, too.
We absolutely need time, and, but you still need a budget to walk in, out of here with tonight, and I can't clearly articulate the performing arts expansion either, right?
Right.
So, understanding that there's work to be done, if you're going to support some of these items, that we will do and come back to you, that would be better informed as we go through, one, the next steps of the process that we're outlining, but also having conversations with people about, well, what would this look like? So, you know, is there a dollar figure that, that kind of encompasses, you know, understanding a portion of it will be used, or the intent is to use a portion of it for what we see tonight, but also a portion of it for professional development or materials that yet to be determined, whatever that might be?
Right.
Because we certainly could use the money, I don't think there's any argument about that. So, just a suggestion, for what it's worth.
And can I just clarify my, my proposal, if you will, for the $4,500? That's, that's based on the cost of the guards times the kids we have in the program.
I understand, I just, I'm wondering if that's already
I'm sure it wasn't in Mark Aria's budget, because
No, it just came out.
There was no mandate for it, and they just voted it two days ago. So, I mean, if it was, if it was $20,000, I'd still feel strongly about it, but I would be really pained about, okay, how do I make, you know, that's harder in a way, because it's more money. So, in this case, I think, last year when we talked about Mandarin at the high school, it was around $40,000, something like that. I mean, this is a sliver of that. I'm just making that suggestion, just as a matter of principle, because it's a safety issue for students.
Then I would make a motion that we accept all of Dr. Hackett's programmatic additions as presented, I would round it up to an even 400,000, to cover professional development, curriculum, literacy support, mathematics support, and student performance opportunities.
Can I amend your motion?
You may.
I, I would just suggest, I, I like that, and it's where my head was, too, and, and the two thoughts I have, one is, since this literacy, literacy section is developed and will be piloted, giving Dr. Hackett the flexibility, as the process continues in parallel, and this is two programs, so conceivably 15 weeks in the fall and 15 weeks in the spring, that's a long time away, to, to give him the flexibility, fungibility of funds, to be able to shift the priority within the category of an after-school tutoring, curriculum, and professional development. Okay? So, it's, it's a concept, sorry. The other, the other piece is to put the $4,500 in there, because it's, it's, it's not a significant amount of money, and it's, and it's really important.
Right.
So, those, those are my two things, so fungibility and
Flexibility.
Flexibility and fungibility of funds, and
But it senses that with the 400,000, then it would be, the 4,000, 4,500 would be included.
It would be included.
Yep, would be included.
Yeah, if we just round off.
Yeah, so it's the 400,000, add the safety equipment, and give the flexibility.
Add the professional development and whatever curriculum support within that, should we determine what we need?
Should we just down the road? Because it may be that we say, this is the thing we need to do based on what we learn, it may be what we learn, like, and we'll be learning from this and from the other process.
Right.
And so just have that flexibility.
And my question from much earlier was about funding, the funding options that you saw for this, and I think you discussed that earlier, and that being able to have the flexibility, which I think others have talked about, as we go through this process over the next few months, to be able to see what, how much you need, and what we think, what you think would be, yeah, how you think best would, would, to fund these needs. I think it's important knowledge, so, I would be supportive of that.
I appreciate the motions, and I would ask that we go a little further, if we're going to go 400,000, I think if we go 500,000, I don't think $100,000 in a 60
Six.
Six million-dollar budget is really going to change.
Let's be mindful of the fact that 660 is 1%.
I appreciate that, and, I do, but I, again, I'm just, I'm putting that forth as, I think we've heard a lot from people, there's a lot of enthusiasm about what needs to happen in our schools, and so I think that there's a lot of support, and I, there have certainly been times when there has not been support. You know, a few years ago, our budget got cut, and I think we have strong support, and I think that support is there, and I, I think there's momentum, and so I, I don't want us to short-change ourselves when we have an opportunity, so that, that just would be what I would say about it.
So, I would just add to that, that, to the earlier comments and to our experience last year, I would rather be in a position where you're having a conversation in March about reducing from $500,000 add than adding to a $400,000 add. So, understanding that this is, this process, as it did last year, without some of these conversations, does kind of play itself out, we don't ever really want to be in a position where if something happens that was completely unpredictable, where we're asking to increase from the budget that you vote tonight and submit to town. So, if that's the feeling, I would just be more, I would just offer that, I would feel much more comfortable starting there than, and then working, if we had, if we need to work backwards a little bit.
But understanding that that $500,000, when we add it to our bottom line, this committee then still determines how that money is going to get spent.
I will bring the recommendations to you.
So, I just, I'm just also communicating that although we've enumerated a number of things here
Yeah, yeah.
We've talked about how these are preliminary numbers, and we don't know, this is, this is the intent of how it will be used, but it's not
It's not allocated.
It's not allocated to specific budget line items, yet.
I mean, what I, what I'm hearing is that we have three, three categories
Right.
That we're interested in, right, with $500,000. Or are we not, are we not interested in the mass specialists? Is, is it the second and third category for the total, or is the first category
I suppose all three.
All three, okay.
All three.
All right, so, understanding, I mean, I think, you know, the 145 is, is a pretty solid number, that's two positions, it would just fluctuate depending on, you know, what we brought people in at, right?
Right.
So, that's, that's pretty known.
Can you refresh the
$50,000 performing arts, maybe it's 100,000, maybe it's not enough, the $4,500 for the throw guard, we know it's really that category of literacy that we're talking about having an allocation of funding that is yet to be necessarily determined, but my recommendation right now is we find a way, we use a big portion of that to, to support students directly through services. Is that fair to say? And then
So, the motion would be to add $500,000 to the budget to support math specialists, direct support in literacy for teachers and students, and to, to increase funding to the 612 Theater Arts Department.
And the net cards.
And the net cards.
And the net cards.
And a partridge.
And do we have a second on that?
I mean, we were also, I was also talking about curriculum and professional development.
Yeah.
That was included.
Teachers and students.
So, so I think, I, I think what, what I heard Ms. Bergstrom say is, the elementary, the performing arts, and the net guard arts, and the net guards are about 200,000. There's 200,000 in here for this program, and there'd be another 100,000 added in, which would cover the, you know...
Any other needed expenses.
Yeah, I mean, the practicality is, is that it's harder to add it in as our budget is developed over the next several months than take something out, so, so, is there a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
Hold on a minute.
More discussion?
Just so, like, we have a number, that we know we're voting. So, that's a, that's a 5.53% increase, I'm just asking if others will, like, check my math.
So, it's 66, 771, 952, 60.
Say that again, Mr. Brady.
66, 771, 952, 60, because we added...
You're adding 500,000 to the 66, 191...
I added the wrong one.
I think, I think the number is 66, 691.
691, yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so, the motion from Ms. Bergstrom, just to amend, for a total FY ' '25 school committee budget of $66,691,952.60, a 5.53% increase over current fiscal year '24.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, thank you. All right. Next on the agenda is future, is anticipated future agenda items, which I know here, we'll have our literacy presentation, as well as the '24, '25 school year calendar, the '24, '25 school day edition of 10 minutes, security updates, oh, and elementary literacy was there at the end, sorry, I didn't see it at the beginning. Future meeting dates, February 13th and February 27th, and that concludes the meeting, so...
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, win cam.